Joe, you hang up on to him, call me. I mean, I'll finish it off. That's fine. I mean, really. You better ask for assistance, boys, but. Time to lead you along.
Yeah. That's right.
They may tilt this way a little bit tonight.
How you doing? I've always thought I needed to, God.
Where are you looking at it? This is the left.
Yeah, that stage right. It's a people's perspective.
That's right.
Matter of fact.
That's right.
We don't have a quorum.
Here comes the quorum.
Yes, sir.
I'd call this meeting to order. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's usually more of us than it is you, and tonight we have more of you than it is of us. And it's the first time I can recall having a meeting of Iredell County Board of Commissioners with only three members here. Mr. Marvin's still recuperating from his hospitalization last week, and Mr. Robinson is in Canada this afternoon, this evening. And anyway, we'll be doing things a little differently tonight. Normally, most of the agenda is done in a pre-agenda session that's held at 5:00 in the afternoon, which would go with some of the administrative matters that usually take very little debate. But since we did not have a quorum this afternoon, we will be going through the full agenda this evening. So this will be a little different than what you've seen in the past. At this time, I'd like to ask Brother Johnson for the, to have the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Father, we come to you this evening, and what a privilege it is to approach your throne, and we realize this is of our, not of our own merit, but of your Son, the Lord Jesus. We ask it in his name. We just lift up to you our fellow Commissioner Marvin Norman this evening, who can't be with us because of illness. We pray you'd give him healing in his body, Lord, and you'd be with those who attend to him. Father, that you would guide their hands in their thought process, that they would restore them to health as quickly as possible. Father, we, we have a lot of anxiety in our, in our country today about the future, but I just pray that we'll be a nation again who will turn to you and seek your wisdom. And we lift up to you our President and our Congress and our Legislature and our Governor and this board here, that you will give us wisdom. For, Father, we know that you're the source of wisdom, and that wisdom became manifest in the Lord Jesus, and we ask it in his name. Amen.
Tonight, we have two Boy Scout troops here. One will be presenting the pledge of allegiance, and also, we have in the audience tonight members or a member of Boy Scout Troop Number 171, Bailey Ant Abernathy, from Williamson United Methodist Church. And doing the pledge of the flag tonight will be Scout Troop 348, Wesley Memorial United Methodist Church. And at this time, I'd like to ask them to come to the rail and their Assistant Scout Master, Mark Williamson. I'd like for him to introduce his troop.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. On behalf of the Boy Scouts of America, Wesley Memorial Troop 348, and we are located across from the YMCA, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to do the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call the following scouts forward. Mr. Kyle Kettstever, Mr. Jacob McNeely, Mr. Nathan McAwe, Mr. Luke Rodine, Mr. Clark Williamson, Mr. Ben McKinney, and Mr. Ben Barker. And Mr. Nathan McAwe will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 348. Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there is one item that we need to add. It's actually a part of Memo Number 12, which is Item J. And this is to reappropriate from FY08. And let me send these around. Ms. Moore, would you pass those around, please? This is a budget amendment to reappropriate from FY08, unspent special appropriation to the Fifth Street Ministries to be used for paying solid waste demo fees. If you recall back, last fiscal year, the county commissioners agreed to appropriate some funds from the general fund to the solid waste enterprise fund to pay for the disposal of the demolition at Fifth Street Ministries. All of those funds were not spent, and so this is to carry those funds forward from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. So what, in addition to the request from Fifth Street Ministries to waive some additional fees, it is requesting that you also bring forward and reappropriate $45,158 in fees from last year that were unspent. Thank you. Okay, and under announcements to vacancies, add to that the Animal Grievance Committee. One announcement, Dr. James Carter has resigned on the Animal Grievance Committee, so this would be another vacancy there, so we need to add an announcement, Animal Grievance Committee, Dr. James Carter, who has resigned. Those are the adjustments to the agenda that I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Is there a motion we approve of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. Motion carries three zero. This time, Mr. Wilson with us. Don't believe he is. Well, if Jim shows up, I guess we can present that at that time. Appointments for the board. Presentation of annual reports on Iredell County Nursing and Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committees. Who will, there you go.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Kincaid, Regional Ombudsman with Central Illinois Council of Governments' Area Agency on Aging, and I want to recognize some of the volunteers who are here with me tonight. All can stand up. Kathy Smith, Ruth Waters, and Mary Jane Sutton from the Nursing Home Committee are here tonight in support as well. I'd like to thank Anna Rice from the Council on Aging, as well as Dan Stafford, Kelly McMillan, and Donna Osborne from the Department of Social Services, our adult home specialists who serve as the backup agents for this committee. I want to thank the commissioners for the volunteers that you have appointed to work on behalf of the Iredell County residents on this committee. Let me share briefly the role of the ombudsman in working with your committees. We have roughly 250 volunteers in our nine-county region, and they are part of over 1,800 statewide volunteer advocates. Iredell County serves the adult care and nursing facilities. These volunteers receive 15 hours of initial orientation and in-facility training, and an additional 10 hours of ongoing training each year through their quarterly business meetings and trainings that they attend. The Regional Ombudsman Program provides several services to the volunteer committees. We conduct the quarterly trainings. We provide technical assistance and explanation and possible interpretations of any of the North Carolina and federal regulations and residents' rights issues. We provide assistance in organizing residents or family councils within our homes, and we offer guidance and direction in complaint resolution. The Community Advisory Committee volunteers are mandated through the North Carolina General Statute and are legislatively empowered to serve as a resident advocate, making them the only agency that has the resident as their focal point for their work. They accomplish this advocacy by making quarterly visits to the homes to discuss residents' rights with the residents, working with administrators, families, and residents on specific concerns or requests, and working to develop special projects, which the Nursing Home Committee has done a fabulous job at this year. Region F has grown to over 15,000 long-term care beds, making it the largest region in the state. Iredell County has 739 nursing home beds and 774 adult care home beds. This county has not experienced any new growth in either the nursing homes or the assisted living facilities. I'd like to highlight some of the work done by these committees from the report that was submitted for your review. You have a report that is both the Nursing Home, any report, and a report from the Adult Care Home Committee. Both groups hosted a very successful residents' rights celebration at the Iredell Senior Center, and we appreciate the attendance of the public officials who took time out of their busy schedules to come this year. The committees made additional visits to area facilities outside of those that are required on a quarterly basis, providing activities, supplies, and helping to coordinate community volunteers. The Nursing Home Committee worked very closely with Ben Garrison from ICATS to coordinate transportation for residents to increase the participation at this year's residents' rights celebration. And we'd like to thank Ben and the drivers who made it possible for some of our residents to attend our, our event this year that have not had the opportunity in the past. The group also benefits from the attendance of the adult home specialist, Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan, from the Department of Social Services at our quarterly trainings. They're able to share information on the quality of life for residents that help both the committees and DSS in our efforts, working closely to protect the residents' rights. Some of the challenges that the committees identified this year are not having a full committee makes it very difficult to fully accomplish the mandates of this program. There are currently vacancies on both the Adult Care Home and the Nursing Home Committees, the reluctance of some of the facilities to follow through on suggested changes brought forth by the, by the volunteer groups, and finding volunteers who are willing and capable of actually spending the time that's required, fulfilling the mandates of this committee, and understanding prior to their appointment what's expected of them. We are currently, at this time, taking a look at the appointment process and ways to help increase the volunteers that, that are available. The committee would like to invite each of you to attend an in-facility visit with us at some point during this year, giving you a firsthand look at some of the issues that we deal with, and to meet some of the residents who call these facilities home. So we'll be contacting you to invite you and, and hope that you'll be able to do that at some point during the year. Does anybody have any questions about the reports that you received?
Thank you, Cindy. I know the, the two boards, the Nursing Home Advisory Board and Adult Care Board, are two boards that we have the hardest time filling. And probably of these two boards, you know, we, because of the citizens, elderly citizens that they serve, and, and, you know, we're all getting elderly. But they, they do so, so much, and from, my mother was, unfortunately, had to spend time in a nursing home before she passed away, and I, I saw an example of, of the people as they become and, and, and go through the facilities, and, and I got an understanding of what, what you do, and, and it means a lot to people, especially if you've ever had a relative in a nursing home. So for those of you who are looking for something to do for your community, I can't think of a better committee or board that you could serve on. And it's a lot of work involved, but, you know, if you, if you're willing to put the effort, you will get many, many times return for what, for the time you spend. So I do appreciate what you do, and, and I hope the citizens of Iredell County appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Kincaid, in response to the request that you'd like for us to visit the facility, I think all the board would be glad to do that. If I can just ask you as a favor to me if you'd give me at least a couple of weeks' notice so I can make sure I can work that into my schedule. Sometimes we get backed up, but if you'd give me at least a couple of weeks' notice ahead of time, I'll make every effort I can to make such visits with you from time to time.
We'll be glad to do that. I know at our quarterly trainings, the committees actually set the dates for their visits for the entire quarter, so we can give you a variety of dates to choose from throughout a quarter and, and can get those to you.
Maybe you can get our email addresses from the clerk and just...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Cindy.
Administrative matters. Mr. Mashburn, would you like to bring this forward?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. We do have several items under administrative matters. I'm going to call on Mr. Smith to present Item A, and then I would like to request that the others just be prepared to follow in line after Mr. Smith. And Mr. Ron Smith for presenting the first item.
Thank you. We have a request for a release of jurisdiction from Professional Property Services, Inc., who is representing Michael Chauvoy. It's a, excuse me, relatively small piece of property located on Highway 150. It's at 872 River Highway, which is just west of the Water Oak subdivision. It's .54 acres, so it's just over a half an acre in size. The properties currently zoned R.A., and the town, it's pretty much surrounded by town zoning and, and town of Mooresville jurisdiction. What I have tonight for, to, as a request, is just to set a public hearing, if you deem it appropriate, for March 3rd, our first meeting of the month next month. And the, the staff is in favor of this request. We feel like the land use controls that Mooresville has in place will, will adequately cover the development that could take place.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Is there a motion for this request?
The request is to schedule a public hearing. Can I ask you, you know what the intended use of this property is?
At this point, it, they proposed a car wash, but I don't know that that is what the end result will be. I talked to the town of Mooresville late this afternoon just to double check, because some, sometimes these things are moving targets. But, but at this point, it is a, a car wash with two bays.
Okay.
Any discussion? No, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reschedule a public hearing for this matter. It will be at our first meeting in March.
Okay. Any discussion? I have a email that I received from Mr. Robertson this afternoon, and I, he asked me to read it this time. Mr. Robertson says, "I'm not in favor of granting ETJ to Mooresville for any property located in the Catawba River watershed. We passed the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance, and I have asked the town board members to join us protecting the lake and streams feeding the lake ever since we passed the ordinance. Monclie Deener is responsible for enforcing the state laws regarding the runoff of sediment from construction sites. The state has failed to enforce their own erosion controls, laws, forcing counties to take it upon themselves to enforce the state's own laws. Property located in the town limits is not protected by the county. When we grant ETJ to Mooresville, we give up our ability to protect the lake from sediment runoff, which is, as the lake's primary source of pollution. This sediment is, is the cause of the coves becoming clogged with silt originating from sloppy or inadequate erosion control measures at the construction sites. If Mooresville would join the county in protecting the lake, I could support granting ETJ for many cases in the watershed. Until that time, I cannot, cannot support granting ETJ to any property whose development sediment can flow into the lake without an effective control measure to protect the property owners and water consumers who will have their lake property ruined by excessive sediment runoff." Ken. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Ms. Smith a question and then reserve the right to make a, a motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Smith, would you, could you address Mr. Robertson's concerns?
Mr. Robertson brings up an excellent point. The, the state is tasked with, with enforcing the erosion and sedimentation control rules that they have in place. They don't do that in Iredell in the unincorporated areas because we've taken that program over. We, I have some very preliminary discussions going on with Mooresville now, based on a request that I've made for them to take a look at our program and, and essentially mirror what Commissioner Robertson has also requested. I can't really say that they, that the state does a good or bad job. All I can, can say is that the county's program is much more attentive and able to address issues as they arise much quicker, because we have a much smaller jurisdictional area there. Their, their Mooresville office handles a very large region. I don't remember the number of counties offhand, but, but a very large region.
Would, would these folks be able to do what they want to do if it remained in county jurisdiction? Is there a process for us to let, to let them do what they want to do?
Well, good question. That, right now, it's zoned R.A., which is residential agriculture, so they would have to go through a rezoning process, and if it were to be granted, then they would have to go through the development process, which would include erosion control, zoning, and building as well.
Would you consider, is that a considerable hindrance to what they're trying to do?
Um, probably not. Based on our land use plan, it would comply. I don't know that, you know, in my opinion, that, I don't know that a car wash is the best use, but, you know, generally speaking, it's going to comply with the zoning, so you don't always get the use that you want. It's just whether or not it's commercial, residential, or industrial. So they could probably go through with it, with a favorable recommendation from the staff.
If we failed to approve this motion tonight, how much delay would it, would it be to this person or business?
They're slated to be annexed, I believe, in June, at the end of June '09, so six months, or, well, four or five months.
So in other words, if we delayed a decision two weeks from today on the motion that, that suggested tonight, how long would that, would that affect them at all?
Just put them two weeks behind.
Put them two weeks behind.
Now, we're not voting on the ETJ release. We're voting on a public hearing.
Well, I mean, I'm just sitting here looking at the map, and right behind is the development with dozens of homes in it. I wonder if we had near this much heartburn over these dozens of homes and the soil they had to move to do this, or is the deal with this poor guy's half acre of land. I mean, it's just something to look at. I don't think he's going to single-handedly erect the whole ecology by moving a little dirt around on a half acre of land.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more question. Would, if, if we go ahead and approve this motion tonight, that's, is that an irreversible decision, or is, is there another final decision to be made after the public hearing? Forgive my freshman questions.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
That's what I am.
This, this is the first step in actually what would be a pretty long process. Tonight would be the, the, we would establish the public hearing for, for instance, next, next, in two weeks. Once the, if, if you vote in favor of the public hearing and then it's released, then it goes into the town's jurisdiction. They will then have to establish zoning on the site, and that's kind of where I was, what I was alluding to with the projects being kind of a moving target sometimes. The town has agreed in concept of what they want to do, but they would have to advertise and, and set the, set the zoning for the site. So in the end, they're probably not gaining too much time by going through the county first, you know, maybe a couple, three months at, at the most.
But I mean, for our purposes, if, if we vote tonight for the public hearing, we can still vote to change our mind when Mr. Robertson gets back.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. We, we approve the request for a public hearing at the next meeting. Is that part of your request?
Your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At our next meeting. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Item B and Item C are Mr. Doodle, Tax Administrator, Refunds and Releases and a Service Agreement.
Good evening. I reviewed refunds and releases for January. None of the commissioners are on them. I respectfully request that they be approved.
Motion we approve the request?
So moved.
Motion's made to re-prove the request. Any discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. Motion carries three zero.
Next item I have is an approval of a service agreement with Central Illinois Council of Government. This is part of the Ortho mapping project that we've undertaken. We could not get this before you with that original contract because not all the counties had decided, so the price could not be determined, what would, the contract would be for. So it's been determined it would be $8,000 for Iredell County for our portion of this joint effort with seven counties for the administration and some of the actually analytical triangulation review for the project. The money has been appropriated.
This money is appropriated in this year's budget.
Yes.
Any questions, Ms. Doodle? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. We approve this request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, License Director Becky Galaher requested I present the next item. That's Memo Number Six, to approve Budget Amendment Number Forty, to appropriate one-stop voting grant funds. These funds have been received, and this is to reimburse the county for part-time salaries of election workers on Election Day. The amount is $26,000, and again, it is Budget Amendment Number Forty.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion may be approved. Any discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, white sign. Motion carries.
Memo Number Seven is to request to award a design contract. Mr. Lynn Niblock, who is the Director of Special Projects, will be presenting that item.
Good evening. The request I bring, excuse me, the request I bring before you tonight is to award the contract for the design of the proposed new animal control facility to the firm of Daggett and Grig Architecture for the sum of $200,000. That, my request would be subject to review and approval of the contract by the county manager. As y'all will recall, I came before you probably about a month to six weeks ago and asked for permission to negotiate with this and some additional firms, and in the process of doing that, was able to reduce their original proposal of $300,000 down to $200,000 for the design of this facility. And they are a specialist or specialized in animal control facilities. They were the number-one choice of our committee that... They were the number one choice of our committee, uh, that studied that, made up with the staff members. They are proposing to team with the local firm, Gilbert Engineering, uh, which is a well-known firm and well-respected firm in this area. And we do have the option in their proposal, uh, that at two different times, at the end of the schematic design phase, we will get our first cost estimate and also at the end of the, uh, the second design phase or the design development phase, we will get an additional or revised cost estimate. And we do have the option, if it becomes apparent at either one of those phases, uh, that it's not going to be feasible to build the, uh, building for the amount of funds that have been funded for that project, uh, to, uh, cancel our contract with them at that time. And I will be glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
First off, I'd like to say, uh, appreciate you negotiating that, that down to $200,000. That's, that's a Iredell County's own little stimulus, isn't it?
It, uh, it does help.
What is the, uh, projected date for the design?
They would estimate it will probably be about five months through the design period until it was ready to put out for bid. And then I would, uh, I would assume that we would probably want to leave it out for bid for several weeks. So five to six months probably before we were ready to start turning dirt on it.
So we're looking at next year's budget.
We would be looking at, uh, being in next year's budget, yes, sir. For, for the construction, not for the design contract.
Does, does Animal Shelter have to go through the same construction, state construction, uh, scrutiny that other public buildings do?
It will have to go through the Department of Insurance Review because it is a governmental building and it is larger than 10,000 square feet.
Any other questions?
Mr. Niblock, I'm just looking on the back page here. The project budget's $3 million.
Yes, sir.
Given the fact where this building's going to be located and the type of structure, you shouldn't run into a whole lot of surprises, but the, is there any contingency built into the construction cost of two and three-quarter million dollars?
Well, we have some miscellaneous costs, some soil testing and et cetera, which covers a broad range of things, I guess, but we have $40,000, if you'll notice there, uh, which I would consider contingency. I would not, of course, you never can guarantee on a project until you get into it, but considering the location, I would not anticipate a lot of surprises in that area. Also, I did talk with Mr. Daggett earlier in the week and they had, uh, just bid out a project in Virginia and the low bid on that came in at about $175 a square foot. And they had, uh, they actually had put that bid, that project out for bid twice because the first time they only got one bid on it. This time they got 12 bids on it. So we all know how the economic situation is now. I would anticipate that we would have a lot of people interested in bidding and hopefully that would help lower the, the cost of the facility.
Does this plan have any alternates?
Well, we have talked about the possibility of, uh, some value engineering if need be. Uh, if you recall, and I know it's a while since the boards looked at the drawing, we had some area to add on at a later date if the need were to arise. Uh, but we also would have the option, if need be, of cutting some of the kennels off if we had to, or possibly leaving some of the, some of the interior spaces unfinished until a future date if we had to do that. But right now with the current economic situation, I wouldn't anticipate that.
Those add alternates then are not including this two and, two and three-quarter million dollars then? That was not part of this?
No, this is, this, the, the 2.75 million that, that we have down there is based on the, the floor plan that, that the board saw that David Montgomery from our staff furnished to Daggett and Grig as a, as a starting point.
Okay.
That, that property's pretty well looked at when they were talking about the cow palace. I don't think you'll have a lot of soil problems out there.
I would not, you never know to your dick, but I would not anticipate any soil problems in that area. I can't think of any other projects in my recollection where there's been any soil issues. It's, it's pretty much red clay out there as far as I know.
Some of that soil's actually moved in there, wasn't it, from when they did do?
Some of it's probably been filled and, and to do the facility, we'll probably be looking at some cut and some compacted fill. But there again, most of it in my, as far as I'm aware, is, is the red clay that we have in the majority of the county, which, which works well for compacted fill.
One more, you got a furnishing allowance of $10,000. I, I take it you're going to bring a lot of furniture from the existing facility and...
There will be some there and there will be probably some need for some additional furnishings. I know we got some figures from, uh, Chris Royal on that. I, I apologize, I don't have that with me at the moment, so I couldn't tell you exactly what those numbers were.
Well, you're a faithful steward of our money, so I'm not going to, I'm going to give you some latitude. I appreciate the job you do for us.
There's a motion that we award the Animal Shelter design contract.
I offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Motion's been made. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Memo number eight is, um, to recognize additional juvenile crime prevention grant funds, budget amendment number one. Ms. Blumstein.
Yes, um, I present to you a budget amendment for JCPC additional funding we've received of $12,472. The council did meet in November and allocated the funds to several different agencies as well as an additional $19,502 that we had already received that we were just holding unallocated until we got a little further along in the year. The council did determine that the best use of those funds was for additional bed days at Barium Springs Home for Children, some additional substance abuse counseling, juvenile mediation, and, and additional appropriation to scan for at-risk children. So I ask if the board would approve this budget amendment.
Thank you, Susan.
Mm-hmm.
I move we approve this request. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Memo number nine is a request for appropriate punishment options, uh, resolution presented by Executive Director Pam Navy.
Thank you, Chairman Williams, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Kittle. This is the first time speaking with you. It's a pleasure and my thoughts to Commissioner Norman. Clerk Moore, could you change the appropriate punishment on there to appropriate placement to reflect our correct corporate name, please?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you. I'd like to request tonight of the Iredell County Commissioners that you support this resolution presented to you, um, on behalf of our Criminal Justice Partnership Program. Uh, I want you to know that our partnership program has been serving Iredell County for 12 years. And over those 12 years, we have served, um, through the direction of the Iredell County Commissioner-appointed Board. And, uh, it's been the CJPP Advisory Board and Jail Task Force. During that 12-year time, by us administering this program through appropriate placement options, we have brought over 1.2 million dollars to Iredell County through state funding. It's critical that we continue that. These funds are threatened this year and the legislature, as we know, many funds are threatened. But I want to give you a number that I have presented to this commission before. In 'oh seven and 'oh eight alone, through our services at appropriate placement options, we can show you a cost savings in excess of $600,000 to Iredell County for no county funds being spent for that, for the program. And those cost savings came in treatment alternatives as well as detention cost savings and working with folks coming out of detention and coming out of the prison system. Just quickly, some of the services, as you see in this resolution, are substance abuse education and treatment, cognitive behavioral intervention, continued education, support, and employability skills. And we do start with 16-year years of age with these clients. I respectfully, um, ask you folks to support this tonight and because we, of the quality service that we offer and have offered for the years, because of the oversight of the county, every month we submit our requests through Iredell County and that is reviewed by the Finance Office and by the lives changed and the effects on the families in Iredell County and for the cost savings to Iredell County. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, any questions, Ms. Navy? Comments? Mr. Mashman, would, would you read this, uh, resolution?
Certainly.
For the public, please.
This, excuse me, this is a resolution for the Criminal Justice Partnership Program. Whereas the Iredell County Criminal Justice Partnership Program addresses issues of alcohol and substance abuse, domestic violence, cognitive behavioral intervention, education, and employment needs. And whereas criminal justice partnership programs with strong involved local leadership and adequate funding can help relieve prison and jail costs, reduce recidivism and dependency on social welfare programs while providing appropriate community responses to crime. And whereas the County of Iredell provides these services and treatments to community-based program participants for whom it would otherwise be unaffordable without Criminal Justice Partnership Grant Funds. And whereas in order to adequately address both the immediate and future needs of these community-based programs and all of its valuable assets, it is necessary that revenue continue to be provided to fund the Criminal Justice Partnership Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners request support of the North Carolina General Assembly during its budgeting process to secure funding for the North Carolina Department of Community Correction Criminal Justice Partnership Programs, thereby ensuring continuity and progress in addressing treatment and rehabilitation needs of individuals within the community. Adopted this 17th day of February 2009, Iredell County Board of Commissioners. Dr. Williams, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we, uh, adopt this resolution.
Motion's been made. We adopt the resolution as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. I would like to invite you all to our Global Youth Services Day on April 25th. Continue to look in the newspaper for our projects and we're going to be using these guys over here in some of our projects. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, the next item is memo number 10. Uh, our EMS Director, David Chora, will be presenting that and it has, uh, New Care Franchise Renewal.
Good evening. Uh, New Care of the Carolinas submitted an application to us a couple months back about renewing their current franchise, animal franchise ordinance that expired at the first of the year. Iredell County staff has seen a tremendous improvement in the services provided by New Care and their willingness to provide, to adapt to the system plans and everything. We have reviewed the application and recommend that the franchise be renewed to a maximum of a three-year term. We also recommend that a maximum of three years be added to the ordinance and also an administrative fee of $1,500 to cover any cost to, to review, review the, the application. Excuse me. I'm here to answer any questions. There are a lot of New Care staff, administrative staffs here also.
Mr. Chora, I know at one time they took a lot more of your attention or the attention of your staff because of some of the issues that were involved.
Yes, sir.
And they apparently made great strides toward resolving those matters. Do you continue to inspect these folks periodically?
Yes, we do. We have, for the last two years, we've inspected when they've brought new animals in and when they take them out of service and bring them back in. And every unit that I've inspected over the last two years have passed without incident. And in fact, on actually February 3rd of this year, the state contacted me, the Office of EMS, and said that they did a surprise inspection and they passed without any complications there also.
Okay, so part of the justification for the $1,500 fee would be not only just the renewal application process, but the, the periodic inspections that you do?
Yes, sir, continuing for inspecting the training records and the time it takes when they bring animals over to inspect the animals.
Well, um, that's fair enough. Okay. Is it, one thing, to be honest with you, I still have a little bit of problem with it. It's somebody we've done business with a long time who, who demonstrated good service and all. Is, is it really necessary for the, upon their renewal for them to supply us with a financial statement that is, that is of some cost to those folks, do you?
Yes, it is. That was actually in the ordinance and I will leave that up to y'all to decide whether you want renewals to actually do that. We can actually change to where an initial would have, you know, the audit to financial statement.
If I'm not mistaken, that was added to the ordinance when we was having problems. Is that not correct?
I think that was in, in...
But Jeff, uh, if you'd like to come up?
Yeah, sure.
Jeff Corbett?
I don't, I don't mind doing it if it's absolutely necessary, but I, I hate to set up here and pass ordinances that unnecessarily cost folks money. That's the point I'm trying to do.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
And your question, Mr. Williams?
I just wanted to know if you had any comments you'd like to make.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we certainly do. It's an honor to come. In fact, two years ago, it was an honor to come before you with our request for franchise and since that, that time. And again, it's an honor to come back for renewal. And these past two years, as Mr. Chora's mentioned, has been a time of, of both growth, but yet significant improvement. And if I could, I'd like to ask and introduce, uh, really the reason for that improvement, a gentleman that we were very fortunate to hire after 23 years in the EMS business. And he's come to State Farm, done a tremendous job here in Iredell County. So I've asked him to, if he could, just to give you several comments about that success and then we'll both answer any questions you may have. This is Mr. John Barrett.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. When I walked in the door with New Care in May of 'oh seven, I knew there were issues. I took it upon myself to address those issues and wanted to make New Care a player in this community and actual partner in the relationship with David and with the EMS service. One thing that we had to do is look at the employees we were hiring, change the hiring process, bring in some new people. Patient care was my big concern because the citizens of this county deserve the best patient care, whether it's provided by David's employees or by mine. And I wanted to address that, working with David on that. We have moved offices because our staff deserved a better place, a more comfortable place, bigger offices. Hired a full-time train officer because training was one of the big issues I think we'd had before. So we took, took it upon ourselves to hire a train officer, implement in-house training programs, and focus on that. We've added two trucks. We had three that were running in 'oh seven. We're running five trucks now, including two on Saturdays because the volume on Saturdays has grown. Worked with the compliance records, changed the uniforms, purchased new equipment, set up a website and developed email so I can keep in touch with my staff. We're working on ALS coverage, which has been one of David's concerns. We're working together with that one. That's taking a little bit longer than I wanted it to, but we're working to fix that situation. Overall, I changed the focus on New Care. It had been lacking direction and I wanted to focus it to an EMS mentality and that's what I've done. Morale's up, employee retention's good. Overall, New Care's a different place today. And I think the letter from Jerry that David mentioned and a letter from Dr. Falstad that's in your packet also is a test of that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Questions, these gentlemen?
I'll say one. I'll say one. Before, when you guys were here, there were some issues. And Mr. Chora, I want to thank you for being attentive to them and helping these guys work through them and you gentlemen as well. I think you made great strides. I still have a little bit of an issue and I know there's been an issue before and I'm not saying that because Jeff Corbett's a friend of mine and I'm trying to look out for a friend of mine, but again, you know, they asked somebody to come up with a financial statement. I, I think if you look at a firm that they've increased the number of the trucks and they've increased the number of the personnel, they, they didn't do that out of thin air. They're obviously in pretty good financial shapes. I, I don't know that we need to regulate these folks to the point where we cost them unnecessarily. I think probably need to look at this statute again. What I would suggest is, is that we make this a night of discussion at perhaps our next meeting and in place of a financial statement in the future, we would just have a, a list of trucks. And from the last time they made a report, let's see what trucks went out of service, what trucks came in service, did they increase the number of their fleet? And what was the, the average tenure of an employee? Let's see if they're retaining employees and if they are, then they're obviously doing a pretty good job. That would, I think, Mr. Chora, that, that would certainly give you some level of comfort as far as the stability.
Yes, I mean, that would be, I mean, trucks are going to come and go depending, as we all know, the fire burn situation. But I foresee that we could probably judge pretty accurately by that, especially if we're not having any problems as far as them keeping employees and constant turnover.
Mr. Corbett, I don't think that'd be overly burdensome to you with it.
Yes, sir, not at all. And, and please know that the spirit of New Care, and I think you'll find it's a renewed spirit, if I could step back one step and mention that when the franchise came into place, we also made some very systemic changes to where my position now represents directly the ownership of the company and I am empowered to make any decisions on their behalf locally. And also in terms of the, the financial picture you mentioned, Mr. Johnson, I want you to know that it's not, that the spirit of that is we are more than willing to provide the county any information it seeks. A concern that I would have is we have put a lot of investment into the operation to improve that. And I would ask that performance certainly be a stronger factor so we don't have to spend a lot of money on accountants to deliver a piece of information that might anecdotally be proven by the work we do. So we would, we would certainly work with anything the county wishes, but we do feel the performance is, should speak for itself.
Well, I just know when I sit down with my accountant, he doesn't work cheap.
That's very true. We would rather put into training, into equipment if possible. I will give you my personal guarantee that the company is in, in the best shape I've ever seen. It's very healthy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm a little confused. Are we asking for a compilation or an audited financial statement or what are we asking for and what does the law require and whose law is it?
It's already a part of the ordinance. In order for us not to request it or require it, it has to come out of the ordinance. And, and that may be okay as far as the, the company that we're working with now, but the ordinance, we do not grant exclusive franchises. So it is possible that some other company could come in and also request a franchise. And, and I think before you make changes to the ordinance, you need to consider that there is, there could be the probability or the possibility of another company coming in and also requesting a franchise. And, and what we may want to grant for one, you may not want to grant for the other, but it's currently in the ordinance, right, Mr. Chora?
Yes, sir.
And you would have to take it out for us not to require that.
Mr. Masherman, may I offer a, a note of clarification?
What, what I was speaking to though, Mr. Masherman, was in the renewal process. Can we discriminate between a new applicant wishing to come to the county who needs to establish, at least in our mind, their financial viability as compared to someone we've done business with for a while and not require them to produce a financial statement?
I, I think you can if you change the ordinance, yes, of course.
I wouldn't, I agree with you to the point that I think if it's a new applicant, we need to have some level assurance that they're financially stable. If it's someone who's provided excellent service for them, they've expanded their services, then I feel less inclined to burden them with a financial statement. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Obviously, Mr. Corbett, you have the financial statement with you or you wouldn't be asking for renewal, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that was part of the package. Now, you will note, I believe, and I'd have to check if, if there's an audited statement required on the initial application. I do know just purely a financial statement is requested as part of renewal. And again, please know we're happy to do that, but, but my concern again is, is if it's anything too expensive, I would much further devote that money to the operation, to the training. But I, we're here to do the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Let's, I've gone, I've led us astray here, Mr. Chairman. Let's go ahead and vote on this and then we can have some discussion later.
Yeah, I, I agree. Is our motion approve the renewal contract?
All for that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. You suggested one time that we discuss this, did you say at the planning retreat or is that?
What we can do at our next meeting, here's, here's what I got in mind that this is for renewal applicants only. I want to be sure, speak to the point this time. For renewal applicants only, in place of a financial statement, they're required to list their fleet vehicles. Those vehicles in service that were at the beginning of the service period and the number and the vehicles in service at the end of the service period. And we can look from that to see if they've modernized their fleet, if they've expanded their fleet. I believe you do have a roster of your personnel included in our packet.
Yes, sir, there is.
If you could include the tenure of the, the length of tenure of those people, then we can judge for ourselves whether those people would be happy. And put you on the spot, Mr. Chora, a little bit, a letter of recommendation for you in the packet.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
That's my problem.
Just a little guidance there.
Mr. Masherman, could you come up with amended ordinance that you could present to us for further discussion?
For the March?
I guess we've got two years, so you have a little time to do with it.
Okay. I'll be fine.
Hopefully you won't wait two years.
Well, if it's okay, we'll just try to have something for the next meeting so we can go ahead and get that done.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Memo number eleven is approval of audit contract with Martin Starnes and Associates. Our Finance Director Susan Blumstein will make that presentation.
Thank you. The North Carolina General Statutes require that we have an annual audit performed. I present to you the contract this year for Martin Starnes and Associates. They were selected by bid process in two thousand and five. We have negotiated down the rate this year to thirty-nine thousand, a six thousand dollar drop, and Deb and I will complete the report, you know, they'll do the audit and then we will prepare the entire report in-house. And I'd request the board to approve the contract.
Motion approve?
So move.
Any discussion? Here nine, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Blumstein, if you don't mind, would you remain there for just a moment, please? Because the next item is a request from the Fifth Street Shelter Ministries to re, for a review of the solid waste landfill fee waiver that was granted back in two thousand and seven. And at that time, if I'm not mistaken, it was for sixty-four thousand dollars?
I believe it was sixty-four five.
Sixty-four five.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sixty-four five.
Didn't bring that up.
And we only expended nineteen thousand and forty-two, leaving a balance of forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which you have a budget amendment before you that if you approve that, will move those funds forward into this current year. However, it is estimated that there, there will be a need for probably an additional twelve thousand dollars beyond that. So even by approving, moving those funds forward, that's not going to be an adequate amount to cover the landfill fees for Fifth Street Ministries demolition. So in addition to that, there would be a need to add twelve thousand dollars to that number. Is that, is that how you understood it?
That, that was the request. I'm sorry, I wasn't a part of the conversation with you and David, so I wasn't sure what the recommendation was. I know that when the original appropriation was approved, it was, it was approved at when the rate was thirty dollars a ton. And since that time, the fees have increased to thirty-seven dollars a ton. And they were asking for either, and, well, let me back up just a second. The buildings were torn down in two parts. The first part was taken down last spring and that was the amount that we had already paid on their behalf. They built the new shelter and then the old Avery Schurle School, which they had been operating as a shelter, was demolished in December and January. And that's what was taken. They do need additional funding because the rate went up and it, what was appropriated didn't cover.
The rate has gone up and the number of loads that they anticipated has also increased. And according to the numbers that were supplied, supplied by the Solid Waste Department, they, through February the first, the charges are seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Even if you approve this budget amendment, number forty-four, that only still gets us up to the sixty-five thou, sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So we need to increase that by twelve thousand dollars, making it fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And that should pretty well cover all of the tipping fees for the demolition of Fifth Street Ministries.
Okay. Mr. Masherman, let me get this clear in my mind.
Okay.
We've got forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars we're, we're moving from last year to this year.
That's correct.
We need another twelve thousand. What did we spend last year?
Nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand and forty-two dollars.
That comes to about seventy-three thousand dollars.
That's correct.
That Aridale County Fund spent.
That's correct.
All right. Okay.
Well, one, excuse me. Well, originally intent was to waive the land fees, the demolition land fees for this project. And then this board took action, which raised the expense per ton.
That, that's correct.
And that was unnecessary because of rising fuel costs.
That's correct.
Okay, well, if the intent was to waive the land fees, demolition land fees, and then we took action, which escalated the cost of those fees, I think we have some ethical obligation to cover the fees.
Would you propose the additional come from contingency?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Masherman, is what you're proposing the, is that the net effect of honoring the thirty dollar a ton fee?
Well, it, it, most, much of it is that. A large portion of it is that. Another portion of it, though, is that there's actually more demolition debris that came from it than they had originally estimated that there would be.
I, I obviously wasn't here for that discussion. Would, what do we need to do to honor what we said we'd do, I guess, is, is the question that I'd have.
Well, I, I really feel, I mean, I don't want to speak for the, the board members that are not here or were not here at the time. I feel that was the intent of the board to grant the request to cover those fees and had they known the total number of loads that would have made at that time and had anticipated the increase in the fee, they would have approved it at the seventy-three thousand dollars to begin with. I mean, that, that's my feeling of what the intent was, is to cover the cost of the demolition of the old Fifth Street Ministry so that the new one can be built.
Well, I've given people more, a harder time than anybody else about waiving tipping fees at the landfill because I've always felt like it's not mine to give away. But having said that, the intent, the original intent of this board, Mr. Chairman, was waive the demolition fees. And at that time, we were looking at severely escalated fuel costs and we raised, we took action, which contributes, I, I think, and I talked to Mr. Millard and he, it's his assertion that he didn't miss it as much as, I'm not trying to get him, between him and the contractor, as much as some other people says he did. But irregardless, if it had been more tonnage, the intent was to take that too. That was the original intent, to hold them harmless on the demolition fees. Having taken that action, I think we ought to go ahead and appropriate the additional twelve thousand dollars out of contingency to cover what was ethically our original intent.
Okay. And, and I would like one clarification, though. This is to cover the demolition only.
Right.
The new construction that's taking place is, if there's any C and D from that, that is to be paid either by the contractor or by the Fifth Street Ministries. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So just amend the budget amendment and I'll do that with the board action.
Okay.
Susan, how's our contingency fund holding up?
We have only made one appropriation from it so far this year and I think we're at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I apologize, it's been a while since we have touched it.
This is no way going to affect that.
It, oh, no. I mean, it won't hurt it. I mean, we used twelve thousand dollars, but we're, we're still not even down to two hundred, so, and we're eight months into the year.
Well, we're doing outstanding job.
Modesty's never been a weakness.
Well, poor pup can't wag his own tail.
So I'll, I'll amend that according to your action. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Susan. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. We, for the request for Fifth Street Ministries to reevaluate solid waste landfill fee waiver, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries three zero.
Mr. Chairman, the last item is approval of the minutes of February the third.
Motion approve the minutes.
So move.
Been made, we approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Announcement of vacancies occurring on the boards of commissions. I believe we have a new announcement for, one for our Animal Control, no, excuse me, Animal Grievance Committee. We had a resignation on that, I believe.
That's correct. Dr. James Carter has resigned and so we do have a vacancy on the Animal Grievance Committee.
That will be for a veterinarian in the morning.
That's correct.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
Wait, does not?
No.
Ms. Moore corrects me on that. Does not have to be a veterinarian.
Does not have to be? Okay. Okay. Points to boards and commissions, Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee, five appointments.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made, we table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Criminal Justice Partnership Program, one appointment?
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
I think I've got one for an at-large, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Laura Matthews.
Okay.
And I believe former Judge Gullett's willing to serve, is that right?
I believe she is.
I'd nominate her as well, Mr. Chairman.
Who, who was the first one?
Laura Matthews. Madam Clerk, I've got her address and number here for you. I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson nominates Laura Matthews and Lynn Gullett. Other mon, other nominations?
I make a motion to table in deference to the missing commissioners. Matter of fact, I make a motion to table all these in same light.
Motion precede a nomination? Mr. Pope?
I think he does. Motion to table has priority.
Okay. Motion's been made, we table these, this nomination?
Well, let me make it simple. Let me withdraw my nominations and I'll resubmit them at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
And I withdraw then my motion to table.
So we're right back where we were.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess, and then I'll offer the motion to table all of these, all these items.
Motion's been made, we table all nominations of appointments to boards of commission, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Have any unfinished business, Mr. Masherman?
Not that I'm aware of.
This is the night for a public comment period. If anyone wishes to speak before the board, we'll give you an opportunity now to come forward.
We did not have any that signed up.
Say your name and speak. This is, new business. County manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, nothing other than the activity report that's submitted to you, and you should have a copy of that. I would also like to say there is no need for a closed session this evening, so at this point, I would like to delete that item as well.
Well, wasn't too bad, was it? Okay, if there's no other business to bring for this board, is there motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion may be adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.[1766.12]